Today, October 2nd, 2024. This is a hybrid meeting. And present, we have David Phil, Randy Iser, myself Molly Keegan, Jane Nevin Smith, and Amy Parsons from the Select Board. I just wanted to make note of the fact that we did have an update to the agenda that was posted yesterday due to an unforeseen item. The item that was added has to do with permission for the fishing derby. So we wanted to get that in this evening. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, signed by the Governor on February 15th, 2022, I announce that this meeting of the Select Board is being recorded by Hadley Media, the Select Board's office via Zoom, and ask if there is anyone present who is also recording the meeting. If no one is recording the meeting, please let the minutes reflect that no one else has indicated that they are recording this meeting. Okay, so we actually have a few appointments this evening. So we have three consultants or consulting firms who perhaps will be helping us conduct the search for a new town administrator. Mike, do you want to?
Yeah, so your first appointment right here at 6:00 PM is Bernie Lynch, Mr. Bernard Lynch from Paradigm Associates. Paradigm Associates located in Plymouth, Mass. And me and I, he was one of the original companies that I had reached out to. Very interested in helping the town. And so essentially, here today to answer any questions that the board might have. Bernie, I don't know if you want to go through an overview first or if you want to just field questions from the board. It's kind of your pleasure.
Sure. Good evening. Glad to be here. And I'm joined by John Petrin, and I can see that one of your other consultants is logging on now. But let me, let me talk a little bit about Community Paradigm and what, who we are and what we've done here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with regards to town manager and town administrator searches. We were formed approximately 10 years ago. Been doing searches for about eight years now. We're the most active recruiting firm in the Commonwealth, having completed over 110 searches during that period of time. As you know, or should know, the field of municipal management has been dramatically changing over the last five to 10 years as one generation of managers is moving out while other generations of managers are coming in. Of course, that's created somewhat of a challenge for communities as it really has become a seller's market, if you will, in terms of, you know, getting the necessary people in place to fill the many vacancies that have come up during that period of time with the generational changes that happened. We've, we've done a number of searches out in your particular area. We've done Hampden, Southampton, South Hadley, Palmer, Belchetown, Amherst, and Munson. Those come immediately to mind, and maybe another one or two in there that I missed. But our process is, is pretty cut and dry. John and I are former managers, and we would be working on this with you. Importantly, we, we've been in the field. We know the position, what the position entails. We also are very familiar with the, with the field of candidates that's out there or potential candidates that are out there based upon all of the work that we've done. You know, when you come across, when you do as many searches as we've been doing, you come across potential candidates and that, that apply for positions or are interested in positions. And very frankly, they go into our rolodex. We're also, because of the number of searches we do, people that reach out to us on a regular basis because they're interested in becoming a manager at some point in time. And so we've become familiar with their, their, their interests and their possibilities. Both John and I are also involved. In fact, John is the current program coordinator for the Mass Municipal Association Suffolk University Local Government Certificate Program. And in that role, those roles and other academic work we do with Suffolk University, or in my case, the University of Massachusetts at Lowell, and their, their Political Science and Public Administration Program. We come across candidates that are, or students out there that are interested in moving on in their careers. And we've developed quite a bit of a network of people that are, that are interested in these, these types of positions. The, the process that we use is we don't go into any community, whether we know the community quite well or not. We don't go in with any sort of preconceived notions. We want to hear from the, from the Select Board. We want to hear from the department heads and other stakeholders about what the town needs, what are the current opportunities? What are the current challenges? What are the skill sets that you need for this position? What is the, what is the style that you're looking for? You, as the Select Board, you're going to have to work with this individual over the course of the next number of years, trying to implement a certain vision for the town. And you want someone that fits into what you want and need. So we spend time talking to you. We have a couple of people that are part of Community Paradigm with background in journalism that help us go through that interviewing process and information gathering process, and then develop a very robust position statement. And I think if you go on our website, communityparadigm.com, you can see some of the, the work that we do in generating that position statement that really lays out all of the detail that a candidate is looking for in order to determine whether this would be an appropriate position for them to apply to. We think it's an important process to go through anyway, just for the town to really think about what you want, what you need. So we spend time with you doing that. We spend time putting together that marketing brochure, which also then serves as a tool for us to assess candidates and for you to assess candidates to make sure that they meet the identified characteristics. And then we begin our, once that's done, that takes a couple of weeks, two to three weeks. Once that's done, we then go into the marketplace. We go in with utilizing that network of people that we have. We, we have contact information of about 400 people in our database that we reach out to. We obviously advertise at a number of different locations that you would obviously assume, the Mass Municipal Association, the International City and County Management Association. We have other, you know, avenues that we use to sort of spread the word. We, we reach out to that database that we have, and then we do direct contact. You know, John, John, I'll, I'll jump in. What John often describes as our approach, you know, there's sort of two ways of doing this. There's, there's trapping, there's hunting in terms of how you get candidates. Trapped, you just put an ad out there and you, you wait to see what you, what you catch. Hunting really requires you to know who's out there, what's out there, and going out, making, making that outreach and getting people to apply for the position. And trying to develop the most, most robust pool of candidates that you can. We bring that whole process of following the information gathering and the, you know, the posting of the position. The actual recruitment period, we generally recommend a four-week period. Once that four weeks are complete, we will then sit down with, we assume that you'll want to use a screening committee, but if you're not interested in using a screening committee, we can, we can work with you in a couple of different formats. But we would then bring those resumes to a screening committee, work with the screening committee to help understand your applicants, help you narrow down the pool to the candidates that would be interviewed by the screening committee and as semifinalists. And then, you know, going, so going through the interview process, working with them on the interview questions. And then we, you know, determine the ones, or they determine who would be finalists brought into the Select Board. One thing that we do a little bit differently than perhaps at that stage than other firms is we do extensive, we do preliminary background checks right up front. We, because we know the candidate pool, we were able to tell the screening committee about any, you know, any information about the potential candidates that are coming forward and then sort of work with them to understand those issues. But then, once the semifinal, once the final, excuse me, once the finalists are picked, we then move forward to do a more complete background check of those finalists. Corey check, educational verification, employment verification. And then we spend time with interviewing the, the references that are provided to us and other people that we, we may know of, that know these candidates. We, those, those interviews of those references take generally a greater length of time than the actual interview of the candidates themselves. I often describe it as the interview of the semifinalist takes about an hour that we do with the screening committee. But then the conversation with the references takes anywhere from 30 to 60 minutes. And you figure that each one has four references. We're, we're spending two to four hours talking to those references, getting information about the candidates that we then transmit to the board in a reference report to give you a better sense of who these people are, what people say about them, what types of projects they've worked on, what their decision-making style is all about, what their problem-solving style is all about. And we give that to you with their, the resumes, with their cover letters, and then help you through the interview process to make a selection. All told, it takes 14 to 16 weeks to get all the way through all of this, which I think in your case would bring you pretty much to the end of January. And then you'd be looking at probably having a, you know, a new town administrator in place probably by mid-March is what, what I'm anticipating would be your, your schedule. So that's it in a nutshell. If I've missed anything, I'm sure John will let me know, and he'll jump in. But we're happy to take, take questions for, from you at this point.
Does anyone have any questions for Bernie or John?
How do you figure out the cost for this?
We have, we have a, you know, based upon the, the work that we do, we have a general cost of what we think you would, would be needed to be paid based upon the, the, the work that we need to do on your behalf and then the, the environment in which we're working in. So.
Can you provide a general range on that, Bernie? Or I understand there are other firms here, so maybe you don't want to.
It's a little, a little awkward, you, you know, particularly when you go first. If you let me, if I know it's going to be like this, I would have come in last. But I, I think I prefer at this point, it's, I, it's probably, I think, I actually think I told the chief, a general figure, and I'd be happy to provide that to you through that.
I have that, Bernie, so I can discuss that with Jordan in future meetings.
And that's a flat rate, no billable hours or anything like that?
No, we don't do, we don't do billable hours. We also don't do reimbursements for travel or, you know, if there's unusual copying, we do, the only, the only reimbursable is on the advertising. You know, because if, if a community wants to advertise, you know, in, in a far more extensive way, you know, we think the MMA, excuse me, the MMA and the ICMA is the, the best way to go. We also could distribute it in other means. But as I say, it's more the network of people and the, the number of searches that we've done has given us that, that extensive network. But we don't, we don't bill for travel. We don't bill for billable hours. We just give you a flat rate. And then the, the reality of that is that if the search doesn't work, the first search, you know, the first time we go out and we have to go back again, we're not going to be billing you up again. It's this all included until we, we get you somebody.
Does anyone else have questions?
So you're in Drake, and that's a distance from here. Sorry.
Also a distance from here.
But you would be coming out to help us with interviews and explain the dates, or would we be doing it remotely?
Some of it you'd probably be doing remotely. We, we take advantage of the, you know, the pandemic obviously was a terrible thing for everyone to have to go through. But, you know, what, one thing that came out of that was an understanding of the use of technology to help control costs and something like this and better schedule, better utilize time. We find that, and John will be doing most of the work on this. And John is in Bolton. He's not in Plymouth. I'm in Plymouth. But so John will be there for certain meetings. But we find that, for instance, speaking with the five Select Board members, if we can schedule those out over a period of days and what works for you, based upon your schedules and doing that virtually, it, it makes it much easier to get all of that work done expeditiously and more effectively. So we'll be doing some of this by, virtually, but then doing the actual interviews we would be doing in person.
Thank you.
I think the only question I have is, you know, you've been talking a lot about your network and, and, you know, the trapping and hunting scenario. But if there are any internal candidates here who are interested, can they be inserted into your process? Or would you prefer we handle them separately if there are any?
No, we, we would, I would prefer that they come through our process. That would be, I, I, that was, that's generally the way we've done it in every other community is really, it's, let me say that there have been a couple of cases. One that I'm, that comes immediately to mind, and maybe, John, you have another one. But I have one that comes immediately to mind in which someone was inserted sort of after the fact. And I know in other searches that other have been done by other firms that that has occurred on numerous occasions. It doesn't reflect well on sort of the reputation of the community long-term because it's seen that, you know, sort of someone had done an end run and rather than go through the whole complete process. So our preference, actually, it's gone through, we've seen it twice now, now that I think of it, John. My, my preference is that they go through the process. And we certainly think that, you know, the screening committee should, pretty much in almost every case, bring that internal candidate through and let them be interviewed and go through, go through that same process.
Curiosity question. I think about apartments. Is there a cost to the candidate?
To apply?
Yes.
No, there is not.
Okay.
If, if there's a, the only, the only thing I'll say is that, and this would be a discussion that we would probably have with the town down the road. If the, so for instance, there's no cost to, you know, we don't charge people to apply for a job, if that's your question. But if there's a, if you decide to, the screening committee decides to bring in someone from Ohio, and we go to the, the board and say, okay, there's a candidate from Ohio. Will you, will you pay to bring those, that person out there? And you say no, then we would give the candidate the opportunity if they wanted to pay their own way to come out. That would be the only cost, if you will, that a candidate might incur. But other than that, we, again, we don't, we don't charge people to apply for jobs.
Thank you.
And the other, the other part of that, I'll say, is just, so there's true, real clarity on that as well. We don't represent any of the people applying for these jobs. We represent the town. So if there's any, if anybody has any question like that, we, we're regularly contacted by applicants. If we can work on their behalf, and we do not. We work on behalf of the community at all times.
Any other questions, John? You've got, got a minute left. Do you want to say hello, John?
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity. Bernie does a great job in presenting for us. I just want to say, we have a great team approach to the way we handle the firm. So Bernie and I, you know, as former managers, we're both involved in a Suffolk program. We're actually out in Pittsfield. Bernie will be in Pittsfield tomorrow teaching for a class. So we've got 25 students from Western Mass, you know, in a class right now. But we also have a couple of people who are communications experts, which is, you know, great for our firm. So in developing the position statement and so on, we have people who are very good on the communication side. So it's not just Bernie and I, but we've got a couple of ex people who were newspaper people. And these are PR specialists, you know, who assist us in this process. So I think we're a little unique in that area. But again, we go out, we make a lot of phone calls. We will get emails out to existing managers and administrators, you know, in the state. And so we'll be trying to, you know, bring the, the candidates into the town.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you both for your time. We'll be taking this up and getting back in touch with everyone shortly.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Great seeing you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Okay, for our 6:20 appointment, we have, I'm not sure if it's pronounced Gru, Gru White?
Yes.
Okay, and is it Richard?
Yes, I'm Rick White.
Rick, okay. Nice to meet you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Sure. I'm hoping you all got a copy of the proposal that I emailed. But I do appreciate the opportunity to meet with you tonight. My name again is Rick White. I'm the principal partner for the consulting firm of Gru White Consulting. We are a full-service consulting firm specializing in local government recruitment as well as evaluating a municipal's, municipality's organizational effectiveness. As a firm, we've been active for 25 years, just this year. Our work is, is focused primarily in Massachusetts, but we have done other New England states. And over the course of those 25 years, we've completed hundreds of very successful recruitments. We invest a lot of our consulting effort regarding recruitment on understanding the community we serve. We believe an effective recruitment requires more than finding qualified applicants. We go to great lengths to ensure we recommend candidates that fit the community and that are also qualified. This is especially important for a community like Hadley with a small-time core, but a presence in a location that can often act a big city. This is a dynamic that requires your next town administrator not only to be qualified, but also to understand, be sensitive to, and be a great fit for the community. Hadley is very unique. And, you know, the target recruitment that we do here would probably focus on candidates with less professional experience than more given your history of employment and your salary range that you've paid in the past. That may change, and we will work with you with that. But the dynamic there in recruiting someone with less experience is you probably have a bunch of department heads that are well-versed, some of them bootstrapped, some of them been around town for a long time, and also very knowledgeable about the town and, and how to operate within it. Finding someone young who's also mature enough, we're not young, but is inexperienced, it is also mature enough to interact and work well with senior department heads who are very well experienced, know the community and part of the experience, is a very fine act and requires a lot of digging and a lot of understanding of the community. So finding someone who has the right qualifications and experience is not a heavy lift. Finding someone whose style and approach to the work that will gel with the community and the department heads and the elected leadership in the community is going to be a challenge. So how do we go about doing that? I use a metaphor, a farming metaphor. Most of the work in farming is preparing the soil. And for our recruit, we spend a lot of time in the community preparing the recruit and preparing this soil. We meet early with the Select Board to get some general direction. We set up meetings with department heads and organizational leaders. You know, that could be union leaders or someone you designate who has a strong presence and force in your organization. And we meet with them between 20 and 40 minutes, depending upon their background and what they, what, what they have to offer. We spend a lot more time with the finance director or the accountant than we do necessarily with a council on aging director. We meet with them to get their feedback as to what they think the organization's needs are, its challenges, and what type of leader, manager they believe is needed. We also ask each Select Board member to identify two to three community leaders that they believe have important insights into the recruit. Having worked in local government, all of us, we understand that influence and policy and direction, identifying needs goes beyond the Select Board. And there are a lot of people in the community that may have an interest in this recruitment and may have some input that would be valuable. We write up a synthesis on the feedback we receive from each group. We share it with each individual Select Board member. And then, once they've had a chance to review that and understand it, we interview each Board member after they receive the synthesis to solicit their input. We then write up a synthesis of the selectman input and in the end, share it with the Select Board, the search committee, if you have one, and some of this, this, the more serious candidates as the recruit matures. We believe this exercise helps us understand Hadley, its governance, operational culture, and identifies important issues needing to be addressed by Hadley's next town administrator. Primarily, this takes us about two weeks. We go nonstop, interview all these people. We write up all these synthesises, and we send it back to everybody we interview and give them a short window to respond to see if we're on target. This helps us gain a better understanding of Hadley and helps us recruit the right person. Simultaneously, while we're doing this, we develop an advertisement and work with the board to identify an advertisement strategy. At a minimum, we recommend the MMA and ICMA job websites. You may have a local periodical that you, you need to advertise. And, but I also listed a series of resources that we used in the proposal that I gave you. The, from this, I'm sorry, from the synthesis, we develop a brochure or a profile that can be mostly a marketing effort. It identifies in brief form what the town's all about, what you're looking for in a candidate, and what some of the challenges are. It's more of a marketing exercise. We find that busy executives want something quick. And once we, we lure them in, you know, attract them, it gives us an opportunity to find out who they are, what they are, and give them more information. We send this brochure out to 300 to 500 potential contact in our candidates and our, who are in our contacts. Networking, though, is the most critical issue that we do. 70% of our placements come from candidates that actually weren't initially interested in the job. Being a public manager in Massachusetts requires a lot of scrutiny and a lot of attention. Being a public manager in Massachusetts requires a lot of scrutiny and a lot of attention. And some people just, you know, won't take the risk to apply for a job unless they're recruited or they're protected, their confidentiality, confidentiality is, is protected. I spent forty years as a manager in Massachusetts, as did Charlie, as did Tom. We have great contacts in Massachusetts. Also, teach and graduate programs, know a lot of young aspiring candidates. And you, which would be fortunate for you. And we find that the personal touch and the personal recruitment is how we get most of our great candidates. We we aren't looking just at the job. And our candidates trust us. We protect their confidentiality. They trust our honesty. And candidates have an understanding. We have a thorough knowledge of the community, its needs. And we, when we call them and tell them that there might be a good fit here and that this may be a good opportunity for them professionally, they trust us because they know, one, we're straight shooters, and two, we know enough about the community and them where, where, you know, they can trust our, our overture. We, they also know that we view them as a customer. We take the time to make the effort to thoroughly screen and prepare them for the process once they apply. And we stay in con, constant contact with anybody who applies. Just, you know, for background, during my career, I had a number of assistants. I also had great internship programs. There are probably a hundred people throughout the country that have worked for me that are either assistants or town managers, either in Massachusetts or throughout the country. And I use them as my primary screening network to, to start talking about potential candidates that may be a good fit. The networking is the most critical exercise we do. And it's based on our relationship and our experience and our connections with people that we've worked with over the years. I don't know if you're going to have a screening committee. I would advise that you do. We, although we share the complete application portfolio with the screening committee in the town, we try to recommend eight to ten candidates for the screening committee to, to, to interview. We attend all their meetings, organize the committee, provide a list of questions. Once we have a list of, there's probably about seventy sample questions. Once the committee has picked the questions they want to ask, we work with them to, to make them Hadley-focused. You can make a general suggestion on a question, but you really want to cater the questions so that there's some connection to Hadley. And from the asking the question, you can discern whether the candidate has done their homework, understands what the challenges are, and understands Hadley. Once we go through the process, we ask the screening committee to recommend three to four candidates for the select board to interview. We repeat the same prep process with the select board. Once they accept the recommendation from the screening committee, we organize the meetings, we contact the candidates. We, we provide guidance on questions to be asked. We file a, a report on the process and the candidates that are recommended. And we staff the effort and the, the board's interview process. With Hadley given its size and the intimate relationship that you're going to have to develop with your next town administrator, we would recommend that the board meet individually, as individuals with each of the final candidates. Generally, we do that in private. It's usually on a Saturday morning. And we can organize it so that before you have your formal public interview, you can have a forty-five to an hour meeting with each of the candidates in a less pressure-packed process, so that you can really get a good feel for who they are and what they are before you, you go and interview them in public. We also do a comprehensive reference check. One of my associates is a former police chief in Arlington who does all the background checks. We write a comprehensive write-up of each of the finalists candidates in our review and assessment of them as finalists. We go to great lengths to contact direct reports, coworkers, boards that they work for. On occasion, we will ask for writings, oh, we will always write, ask for writing samples. If we can, we, we, we will look online and identified by the, the candidate presentations that they've made in public so that we can understand how they do that. And we also have, we talk to the, the press in the community that they work in. We talk to advocates, you know, citizen advocates and volunteers in the community. And on occasion, we've actually visited the, the community, sat in a coffee shop and talked to, to people and asked them about candidates, depending on, on who they are. We don't, we ask the candidates for names. We probably interview about thirty references. Probably half of them are identified with the candidate. The other half are peers that we know or from talking to some of the references, getting names of other people to talk about the candidate and contacting them. You know, I'm not going to take it up any more of your time. This is a brief overview. I think the proposal speaks for itself. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have questions for Rick?
It looks like in your proposal that you were slated that this would take about thirteen weeks. Have you had situations where it takes longer? Or is it hard?
Well, I had a long conversation with the police chief, and I, I know he's eager to go back to his real job. You know, we, when we propose, we identify an eighteen-week process, but we also communicate to the select board. We, we can craft the schedule in a way that meets whatever their needs are. After talking to the chief, I, I shortened the recruitment process. I only need six weeks. I need the two weeks for the advertisement and interview and the synthesis development and the brochure development. And, you know, recruiting will take me another month. If we can get a screening committee that can adhere to a schedule, the thirteen-week process shouldn't be an issue. I, I'm trying to think. Carver, actually, I, I submitted a thirteen-week schedule with Carver, and they asked me to reduce it to ten. And I, I killed myself getting it to ten. And imposed upon the screening committee to, to meet much more frequently in a condensed fashion than they wanted to, but we were able to do it. So I, I don't think keeping to the thirteen-week schedule will be a problem.
Thank you. David, do you have a question?
Yes. Are you, is your firm compensated by any of the candidates in the search process? Do you work on behalf of the candidates or on behalf of the town?
We view the candidates as our customer and, and we serve them, but we work for you. The only compensation we get is the fee that you pay us, and that's it. And I, I would advise you never hire a, a firm that charges the candidates for, for a job. It's, there are, there's a, a conflict there that makes me very uncomfortable.
So when you give us an estimate for the cost of this project, is that fixed or will there be changes to it because you've had to travel out to Hadley more often? Or we're really difficult to work with and you have to spend more time in this, or whatever it may be?
I, I shouldn't admit this. I don't do this for the money. I, I care about the profession. I care about helping communities find good people. Our proposal gives you an eighteen-month guarantee that if for any reason, any of the candidates we recommend don't last eighteen months, we will come back and do the recruitment for free. We're that confident in the work, the farming work, work we do upfront, the effort we take to understand the community and the match that we recommend for the candidates. The, the, I, I'm sorry, but I, I missed part of the question.
So if it takes you more time in terms of travel or other things, that's all built into the base rate?
I, I was a manager before this. I never let a committee meet all by itself. And I wouldn't do that here. Whatever I give you for a price will be comprehensive and there will be no extras, no nothing. We're committed to doing the job and doing it right, getting you a good candidate for however long it takes and for how many reasons, for however many resources we have to put into it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Rick. Thank you so much for attending our meeting tonight, and we'll be back in touch with you soon.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, and our final search consulting firm for the evening is MRI, and I believe we have Alan Gould. I see Lori Gould up there. So do we have anyone from the consulting firm MRI with us this evening?
You're on mute if you're trying to talk.
Can you scroll over, Alex, so we can see us? Hang on.
There, I'm, I'm doing it.
Okay.
There's two people.
Yeah, I'm here for the, the Young meds club fishing derby request, not the consultant.
It's Sean Gould.
Oh, okay.
I believe Buzz.
Sorry, yep, I should have said that.
Sorry, yeah, I believe Buzz is actually.
Is Buzz from MRI?
I think that was the guy we got last time.
I'm asking him to unmute.
So like once?
Buzz, are you there?
Hello?
Oh, Mercier. There we go.
You got me?
Yes.
And I just got off the phone with Buzz. We were just waiting. We were watching you guys, and we didn't want to participate in the interviews, but.
Okay, so whoever's going to be presenting, we're ready to hear.
Okay. Buzz should be on in a minute, but I'll start. So first and foremost, thank you for the invite. You probably recall, and Buzz was the lead, we did your search the last time around in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. We know Hadley a little bit because of that. And we're very happy when Mike gave Alan a call. Alan would be here. He's the president of the company, but he's on vacation, and he said, I can't zoom in from where I am, so. But he will be the lead if we're successful in, in being engaged by the community of Hadley. And the, the other part of the team will be myself, Bob Mercier, and Buzz, Stepczynski, who, as I mentioned, did your search the last time, and I think you folks ended up with Carolyn. So, and the good news for that is you had Carolyn there, you had David there before. You've got stability. That's a good thing in this field today. We, we've done a number of these, and we can go into that a little bit on the question part of it. But it, it is getting difficult. It's a difficult position to, to occupy in today's environment. But that doesn't mean you can't find good people. We just found somebody who I think is going to turn out to be very good in a town of Lakeville, Mass. It's a town a little bigger than you. It's about ten thousand people. He's a, he, he, in this case, is a younger individual with a lot of passion, a lot of energy, the type of individual that we like to place in communities like yours, which need that passion, that commitment, that energy, because they're breaking into the field. And this individual is not totally breaking in. He's a financial guru. He's been an assistant in, in good-sized communities, so he's not a rookie, but we think he's going to work out very, very well, so. And I see Buzz is on. Buzz, you want to take it from here?
Yeah, thank you, Bob. Yeah, I had a hard time getting on. I went out and got back in again. I don't know if Bob mentioned you, but Alan Gould, our president, is traveling, and he's not able to be with us this evening. So he just wanted to let you know that, that he was on vacation and not able to be part of this. But I want to say it's nice to be talking to you folks again. I was the lead consultant on the search four years ago where we found, you folks found Carolyn, and hopefully that worked out fine. I understand she's retiring for her own reasons, and we're happy to be considered again to do a search for you folks. As Bob said, we've had some success these past few years since we've been here. We've worked in some small towns, towns your size. After I worked with you folks, I was in Berry, did a search in Berry. And then, I don't know if Bob mentioned, most recently, this past spring, we wrapped up the search in Southwick. And so we're familiar with Western Mass. We're familiar with, with your region and would be pleased to be considered for another search. And the market is lively. In, in Southwick, we had seventeen candidates. In Berry, believe it or not, we had twenty-four candidates. That was a year ago. Back almost a year ago to the day, I think October second, I was looking through my notes, the select board there appointed a woman as their new town administrator. So, you know, it's a little more challenging now than it was a few years ago, but the search we did four or five years ago was challenging because it was the middle of COVID. If you recall, I certainly recall. But, you know, ultimately, we were successful. You folks got a good town administrator.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of things, if I might. You don't, you know a little bit about us, but just a little bit about me. I've been a town manager, town administrator predominantly in eastern Massachusetts, in Burlington, Massachusetts, and in Bereka, Massachusetts. Also done some small temporary assignments in Boxborough, Massachusetts, and Wayland, Massachusetts. I've also been, so I, I empathize, I think, with the five of you sitting there. I've been an elected select board member in my town of Tingsborough, which is a town of about thirteen thousand people. So I, I've, I've seen both sides, both from the professional manager perspective and also from the chief elected official perspective. So I, I bring that to the table, which is a little bit different than a lot of folks who are in this business that we're in, the recruitment business, so. And Buzz, you didn't give them your history, although they, they had it four years ago.
Right. I've been retired from the town of Andover for almost ten years now, and I've been doing recruitment with MRI, with Bob, and with Alan ever since, and, you know, in Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Rhode Island. And we finished up a job, two jobs actually, in Connecticut, in Mar- in, uh, Marlboro, a very small town, Marlboro, Connecticut, uh, 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 about six, seven months ago. And then, uh, about the same time, we did, uh, uh, Winchester, Connecticut, Winchester, Winstead, uh, Connecticut, which is, uh, south of you folks. But, um, so we've, we've worked, uh, in small communities and we just are just wrapping up Lexington. So we've worked in larger communities as well. Um, uh, I see, Bob, are you not on, um, the video?
Trying to get on, but, uh, probably, and it seems my camera's not working, but they can hear me.
All right. All right. Um, that's good. Um, so, um, yeah, let, let me just comment one thing, Buzz, uh, just so,
uh, they know. Um, so one of the things that, uh, whether you go with us or not, one of the things we'd like you to just think about, uh, as a board is don't restrict yourself to a, what we call a traditional, uh, town administrator, town manager, somebody who's been in the field for 15 years, that type of thing. And I don't, I'm, I'm sort of preaching to the choir here because you guys had Carolyn, which is a non-traditional candidate. Um, but don't shut the door to that. We, we have been successful in placing, uh, maybe Mike will appreciate this. We've placed, uh, people in, from the police field. Um, we've had very, very successful two that I know of. One who was the, believe it or not, the head of the Rhode Island State Police. He was a colonel. He's now the South Kingston Rhode Island Town Manager. Similarly, in Somerset, Massachusetts, we have a very successful candidate. I knock on wood when I say this because I know that could change tomorrow. Uh, who was a deputy, uh, police chief in Cranston, Rhode Island. And he is now the town administrator in Somerset, Massachusetts, and by all accounts is, they love him. So my point is, uh, there are talented people across the spectrum in municipal government. Uh, so just keep an open mind. And again, I'm preaching to the converted. You did that the last time in your search. So, uh, that's just for your information.
Does anybody have any questions for, uh, the folks from MRI?
I'll ask the same question, uh, as I asked the others. Do you receive compensation from any candidates to work on their behalf or do you work strictly for, for the?
Strictly for the client, for you.
We, we work strictly for you. Yeah.
Yeah.
If we have a candidate that we can't make a, a deal with or something falls apart before they get hired and we have to start the process all over again, will you charge us again, or will that be part of the original fee?
That's, that, we, we have a guarantee. We, we call it a, a year guarantee. Uh, in fact, we unfortunately had that happen last time. We had somebody at the altar and it didn't work out and, uh, and, and, but it did work out with Carolyn. So, yeah, that, that, it doesn't happen often, but if, if it does happen, we stand behind the process. We stand behind you folks. Our job is to find you a, a, a good qualified town administrator.
Thank you.
What's the timeline on your process?
Well, we typically, we typically say, uh, uh, about four months, 12 to 16 weeks. And that, that, believe me, that is, that is dependent on your desires. Uh, and just as a, for instance, if you want us to talk to 25 people in town and you want us, and you have a screening committee, I don't know if you're doing any of that. Uh, that may elongate the process a bit, depending, as you know, with the open meeting law and stuff, everybody has, you, you have to post everything with those meetings and sometimes you can't get people at the same time. So it just expands the process. But typically 12 to 16 weeks, we can get somebody.
Have you folks, um, decided if you're going to have a screening committee or a search committee or is it, uh, is it going to go right to the select board?
Well, I think that's going to be our next conversation. Yeah. Um, and question, um, as you're likely aware, there are multiple town administrator positions that have opened up in Western Massachusetts. Um, just from a management bandwidth standpoint, you know, not sure which searches you're involved with, but do you feel that you can, you have adequate, uh, time and resources to do this?
Yes.
Well, I, yes, yes. The answer is yes. And I can tell you that Buzz just mentioned, we just finished, uh, Lexington, Massachusetts, uh, last week. And we're finishing Lakeville, Massachusetts. And, uh, we, we, as a firm, and it's Alan's philosophy because we serve New England, uh, and Buzz and I handle the Massachusetts recruitments and the Rhode Island and Connecticut recruitments. Alan and another team handle the northern part, New Hampshire, Maine and, and Vermont. Um, w- we are selective and, well, let me answer your question directly. Uh, we are not applying to any other positions at this point, uh, any other searches at this point, nor do we have any more ongoing after we close out Lakefield. You will be, uh, you will be front and center for us. And, um, we, we, we do that purposely. We don't want to have three balls in the air with three different communities. Some similarities in there, in those communities. And by the way, we're not innocent of this. We've done this in the past. But it's a little bit uncomfortable to be bouncing the same candidates between two or three different communities. We don't like to do that. So as I said earlier to the question, we are very selective in the communities we look at. We want to be able to focus our entire commitment to that community and that would be where we would be with Hadley.
Okay. Thank you.
Jane, um, if we have an in-house candidate, how, how would you treat that?
Why did you want that one?
Yeah, we, we would, we would treat an in-house candidate like, like any other candidate. They would go through this, our same process, you know, as, as you know, we, we, we have, um, uh, essays that, that we would do. They, they would be treated just like everybody else, uh, as they should be. Um, you know, you may have an in-house candidate that, um, is absolutely outstanding and, uh, uh, I think it's healthy for them to go through the process where, to, to show that they're as competitive as anybody else in the marketplace. But, um, certainly an in-house candidate, um, we, we often have those in communities and sometimes, you know, it's, um, it's a, uh, uh, it works out for the municipality. Um, sometimes it doesn't. Other times it's, uh, it's a learning experience for the in-house person to go through the process because it, it's a, a, a professional development, uh, kind of thing. If they don't get the position, they, they certainly understand what is involved in getting a position of this nature.
Anything else? If not, um, Buzz and Bob, thank you so much for your time tonight. Uh, I imagine we're going to have a little bit more, uh, conversation than we'll be getting back in touch with, uh, the firms.
All right. Well, thank you for the, uh, the privilege of speaking with you folks again and we wish you the best of luck on filling this important position.
And thank you. Good luck. Good luck. Yeah. Bye-bye.
Night. Um, okay. We've got three minutes before our seven o'clock appointment. So let's see if we can, uh, just quickly.
Go ahead. Jump over.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Same matter. Uh, I just wanted to let the board know from kind of a global perspective that I've spoken to all three of the, uh, firms multiple times via email, as well as on the phone. Um, the analogy that, uh, Bernie referenced in the beginning with hunting versus trapping, uh, all three of the, uh, firms, from what I've gathered, have, have real go to the ground field to them. So they, they really do recruit. Um, I'm not sure, you know, you could really go wrong with any one of them. But what I would also, you know, obviously you want to take it under advisement, think about it and make that decision. But you do, as you all know, have one internal applicant from, from our, our, uh, workforce. And so just really quickly, I don't know if you want to make a decision now or not, but, um, we could put that, you know, your decision as far as, uh, which company you'd like to go with, if you want to go with a company and/or, uh, looking at the internal candidate on a future meeting agenda, potentially Monday or next Wednesday, just with some marching orders coming out. That would be my suggestion. So if you have the, uh, the application for your internal candidate, I email all of you. You can review it, take some time with it. I can put it on the, it was discussed in the future meeting.
Um, we do have the hearing scheduled on, on Monday, right? Um, so that would be the only topic that night. I mean, I, I know I'd like a chance to kind of think about these firms and then I'm also hoping if you do have, um, information, uh, of monetary.
Yeah.
If you can send that to us and then we would need that for our discussions. Would people be okay doing it Monday and not waiting?
Yes, that's fine.
Sounds good. Me, I think we need to keep moving forward.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Great. That brings us exactly to seven o'clock. Thank you.
Good. Good job.
That's it. I wasn't looking at you. I'm like, oh, I forgot. Mike wants to say something. Okay. So that brings us to, um, our joint meeting with the Board of Assessors. Um, I see that some of you are here. Do you want to call your meeting to order?
Can't hear him at all.
Oh, they need a microphone.
No, I'm right over here.
Okay. Thanks. So, um, just for everyone at home tonight, um, from the assessors, we have Jeff Mish and Bill Bannock. Bill, is there nothing else you wanted to be doing today of all days?
I'm trying.
Said nothing else you wanted to do today. I thought it might be a special day for you.
Looking forward.
Oh, the birthday. It's all better. You can do it. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Bill. Happy birthday to you.
Okay. Well, that was different. We should have joint meetings with you more often. All right. Okay. Well, thank you for, uh, coming tonight. So, um, I, I understand the topic of, of discussion tonight is you wanted to meet with us to discuss, um, Dan's, uh, planned.
Well, actually you wanted to meet with us.
Okay. All right. Good. But we, we collectively wanted to discuss that. So did you want, um, to start?
I just agree with Dan really. I don't mind the world. Get the man that.
Oh, no, I didn't hand that up.
All right.
And then you can jump in or Mike can jump in. So we, we had a, a meeting in, you know, with all types of scenarios and all types of good things or bad things and easy things and hard things. And, uh, one of the things we came to an agreement was on the hiring option. And we, Dan really, but we're hoping and Dan seems to believe that we will find a fully qualified, excellent applicant in a pool from the area, from his association.
I'm hopeful.
Very happy. Okay. All right. If, if that's not the case, option two, um, we find someone that has some experience, not so much that he's probably more trained. Um, and that would be something that have to be taken above Dan's aesthetic, maybe. Some of that training perhaps, yeah.
Possibly, yeah.
That's all. And, and Dan actually put on here and, uh, he's got on here partially qualified, but as we threw it around and things, uh, partially or even qualified, not so much as a roper or a praiser, but someone maybe with a county degree or, you know, some school that could, doesn't have that actual experience, but would you quit learning if they end up picking up? So it's not like we're limiting ourselves to people in the field entirely. And then the third thing, if that happens and we're going to assume it's not, then we probably have to go into a pool of retirees and then feels with some folks out there that could maybe bridge this until we come up with better ideas. Maybe the reason we even get someone involved by these owners or salary or just timing is all. So we could get someone and then feels there's some folks out there that are retired that could step in and keep a bridge going until we can get somebody. Um, and you guys can jump in anytime you want. I just wanted to get that out.
Yeah, we met with Mike last Wednesday for probably about a half an hour and went over this and I'm, I'm optimistic and I think he's optimistic and the board's optimistic that we'll be able to find somebody uh, within the next eight to 10 weeks, probably by mid-December. It all depends on, Mike had approached the subject of having an overlap where they start before I leave. So there's that training window there and they can get familiarity with the office. Depending on how long that window gets budgeted for, uh, we're hoping to get somebody by early to mid-December. Maybe by Christmas at the latest.
And yours is January 17th?
Seventeen.
Seventeenth is your departure. Yep.
I gave Mike a, a request for six weeks of overlap. But I think that might be a little much because I'm not going to be here Christmas week. And with our clerical staff only working 20 hours a week, I'd feel uncomfortable having somebody come in and be there, working by themselves with the public and tax bills just getting mailed out. They don't need that kind of introduction to have.
So a lot, a lot of it will be, I mean, uh, we get, right? What level of experience do they have? If the overlap is absolutely necessary, but, you know, like Dan said, uh, and also the likelihood of, of getting this person hired before, especially in county meetings where we're going to need to, uh, add more funding to that line, however the overlap is nil. So, uh, we need the, you know, budgeting over and above what we think we need is probably the best, best plan of action. Just in case we get somebody that doesn't have a lot of the steering set we was hoping for. And then we'll train him up and hopefully he'll be ready, um, before he's, he's done. But that was kind of the plan of action. So really what it comes down to is, is, uh, we wanted to have this discussion to see what Dan and the assessors think the town of Hadley needs moving forward. Make sure we're in agreement and then get my marching order to make that.
Yeah, Dan, because you get quite a, I think it extends to, uh, job responsibility.
Well, that's the, the job descriptions.
Yes.
That, uh, we adopted the, formerly the job descriptions that Collins Center did.
Okay.
At our last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, so as far as advertising, how will that work? So, well, we can handle the advertisement part of it from the administrator's office based upon direction through the select board in agreement with the assessors. As to what we're advertising for, are we advertising first for a full-time individual? Uh, where Dan thinks, I mean, if we're going to advertise in the end, you know, MMA or, or his professional association, uh, he can help with that. How do we, how do we make that happen? We're talking about, you know, LinkedIn or something like that. That's something that Jennifer and I can take care of. Um, if you're, if we don't get any bikes, you know, then we move down to like we said, option number two. You know, or even option number three, where we're looking at contracted individuals, uh, working on a hourly basis.
So the one point I, when we were going through that discussions, I would like to get an advertisement from the Gazette just because I'm going to find someone in this area that misses because if we go through the associations, et cetera, maybe somebody sitting right here in Hadley that won't know, yeah, we don't want to miss them. So.
Yeah, there could be a former assessor that's out there that's not actually working as an assessor right now. It could be an appraiser or a real estate agent. Or in some other capacity, they may say, gee, maybe I might want to take this time to get back into that field.
And, and it sounds like, I mean, just from, from listening to, to the way that you portrayed this, it sounds like there's some degree of, of flexibility. I mean, you, you, you gave a wide range of options in terms of what could work for Hadley. So if I'm, I'm hearing you correctly, the first step is to just let it be known that we need an assessor and then start evaluating from there.
Right. So hopefully we get a number of applications and it's easy from there.
Mm-hmm.
So I think maybe, uh, get the Gazette advertisement out there and Dan's association, that he's a member of ASAP and see what we get and then we could decide on A, B, or C for the plan.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit backwards or we're backing into a solution here, but essentially ultimately, depending.
ultimately depending upon what we find, we save the town's money a lot of what we're going to what we end up hiring. Yeah, do you need um anything from me that I'm contacting in your association or you take care of the Gazette part and you take care of?
If you can handle the Gazette part, I can handle the my state association and I'll send an email blast out to our local association and also Franklin County Association.
It'd be good to have the same dates and everything so they should coordinate and make sure their advertising.
Yeah, I mean, we can't post the job description in the Gazette. I'm looking for maybe a paragraph posting.
Yeah, just that it's available. Go to the top website. I'm sure Emily can post it easily enough on the top website.
So I know the Gazette lags a little bit with their advertising now compared to what it used to be. How how soon do you, you know, if you submit something to the association, is it out there within a week or is it a monthly publication kind of thing or how does that work?
It would, it it's basically online.
Okay.
The state association, the local county, Hamp- Hampshire County Association, it would more be more be like just us sending an email to the individual members or the the other offices in Hamp- Hampshire County saying this position is open. If they want to, if you know of anybody that might be interested in it or someone in your office that might be interested in it. The full job description is on the website.
So would a like third week of October or last week of October be enough time, you think, to get a response from the Gazette and the association people or just to kind of move things forward for a week?
Uh, yeah, I would think we could do a either October 31 or November 1 deadline. Filing deadline. And then that would give us, I think, more than enough time for November, right?
If we send something, we give them a lot for it.
If we sent them something tomorrow, they would go in and Saturday, Monday's paper. It's it's quite substantial to let you know.
So Dan, can I come see you tomorrow will work out the uh will work out what most people should say.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then in terms of the the actual hiring process, would, yeah, I mean, obviously the assessors, um would there be you know, the town administrator participate in that as well or?
Oh, certainly we need Dan there for his expertise, sure. And I would assume us and then at least a board member, a or, or, I think I already said that, uh, this is uh 35 years since this is Becky.
I was just gonna say, what did we do last time?
Yeah, that that won't work. I was brought in for the interview and there was the entire finance committee, entire select board, entire assessors board.
Wow.
Uh, town administrator, accountant, treasurer, there was like 18 people all filing questions.
I really don't want a bunch of people who weren't.
I would say probably three. I don't think
outside our board.
I would think probably the chair, me, HR director, well, when we hire an HR director. And maybe the town administrator.
Yep, and and then professional one person from the select board.
And yeah, that, yeah, I think that would be.
Yeah, that sounds.
Okay.
Molly would love to do that.
Molly, it'll be his free time. Yeah, all my free time.
All their meetings are at home.
Yeah, that's right. I just found that out. Um, I I will do it, but I'd be more than happy to have somebody else if they would like to. Okay.
A lot of hands up.
All right, it looks like you're stuck with me. Okay. All right. No, that sounds good. I think we can move it along and um appreciate the yeah, like I said, 35 years. Wow, it's gonna be gonna be quite the transition for everybody, so.
Yeah, and the clerk is, well, our clerk is leaving as well. She's got 36 years.
Janice.
No, I'm sorry, 38.
Yeah. Oh, she'd been longer.
38 here. Well, we're both the same. But I have four years in East Bay.
Okay.
So we're both 38 years.
Okay, anything else? For the assessors, um Dan, you were gonna stay and just give a departmental update. You want to do that while they're still convened?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Uh just quickly, one of the things we did back in June, uh 2024 Equalized Values came out and we noticed that the our new growth was underestimated by the state. So we appealed that and got that amount increased from 11 million up to it's a tad over 23 million for the year, which
Quite a hundred.
Which, so that sounds like.
Yeah, they when I talked to Chip Peck at DOR, they don't take into account if there's any major projects coming in to town, which we had the self-storage facility and the hotel going up. And those wouldn't, they just take a rolling five-year average of what we've had. So we got that bumped up. That'll result in an increased state aid
Great.
over the next couple of years. Uh, back in June, we also released 70,000 of overlay server to of overlay, the overlay surplus, which will help boost free cash. Fall town meeting. Uh, we processed the the real estate abatements, which we didn't get too many. There's two that went that are going to the ATB. But I have a feeling those won't be heard before next spring.
And Dan, I'm sorry, just for, so when you say release the overlay, so you have budgeted 100 something thousand or whatever or?
Uh overlays was changed with the Municipal Modernization Act.
Okay.
Instead of having a a set amount each year, which we used to put in 70 each and every year, it got lumped into one overlay amount, one account. So we would just add a little sum each year. We we budgeted 70. But when it came time to do the recap sheet, we would traditionally knock it down to probably 40, 45. Uh exemptions and senior tax work off are probably eating about 30,000 of that.
Okay.
So we've been slowly adding 10,000, 10,000, 10,000, 10,000. And this year, I think we were up to about 220 or 230. So we're really 70 of that. And that's still, we felt that still gives us good cushion if we get a large commercial case. We're we're not going to say, ooh, we need to all of a sudden come up with another.
And that's what I was wondering. Yeah, that was always the concern was if there was a large, large request that came in, so.
Yeah, there's enough there to cover sizable abatement if we need it.
Okay.
Or a large increase in abatements or senior tax work off or exemptions.
Okay, so sorry to interrupt. I just want.
Oh, no problem. Uh, we processed the five motor vehicle excise commitments that have come in so far. We're up a good amount of money this year, probably about a, I think we took in about a million dollars in motor vehicle excise. Which is a lot more than, I think the year before we were at 840. Now we're slightly over a million. Uh, we processed all our map changes. Did supplemental real estate building. And we mailed out exemption applications to anybody who receives one last year so that they could process them timely and get them filed. Uh, what we're currently doing, we're finalizing our building permits, should be done probably by the end of the week with all the permit work. Uh, we're looking at growth is probably going to be a little bit higher. I think we estimated 275. We're going to be around 290 for our actual growth. Uh, as we discussed earlier, we've got two people retiring in the office. And we've been working on that. The chapter land applications are going out probably the beginning of next week. They were due October 1 was the old due date or old deadline to file. They are now due December 1. The legislature changed the filing deadline last year from October 1 to December 1 because there's too many farmers still out harvesting right now. So they're not actually getting the the forms filled out tightly. So they changed it to December 1, gave them an extra two months to work on it. Uh, we're working on our assessments for fiscal 25. It looks like we're probably going to go up about 3% on the single-family homes this year, which is not a whole lot, but there's a few other communities nearby that are going up about 3 or 4%. So it's it's not an astronomical amount. I mean, in the past, we we've seen 10, 15% a year increases. So it's not really going to be that much and it shouldn't result in a huge difference in a person's tax bill.
How about commercial?
Uh, commercial is probably going to stay about the same. We only had seven, six sales that actually qualified that were qualified arms-length sales for 22 and 23. So we're looking at, we're going to be about 92% of of sale price for those six. So we're, we should be okay with that. And residential, we're down to just over 90 using the preliminary ratios. So we're looking at probably bumping it up to 94. Which would be where the 3% comes from. Uh we're in the process of doing the boat excise. We'll have that squared away by the end of the calendar year. Not that it's a large amount. It's only about $3,500 a year, but 3,500 is 3,500 in taxes. And uh we're looking at for the classification hearing, which is coming up, potentially holding that on November 20.
As soon as we can get it in, yeah.
Yeah, if we can't do it the 20th, we can do it the the week after Thanksgiving. Typically, we would normally have a hearing like the first meeting in December.
That Thanksgiving is like drop dead right.
Uh, for town meeting, we don't want to go beyond the 14th or yeah, the 14th is probably the latest, but the hearing would be done after everything else is done. So we could actually do the first meeting in December. I think that's the second, third.
Second, third.
And then that that would be a problem. We'd have it back in plenty of time.
Okay.
And we're starting, we're going to recap.
All right. Well, we appreciate you coming in um on both fronts. And we're trying to do this bring in um departments so that they have an opportunity to bring the board up to speed on what they're working on. So now it's busy time for your office this time of year. So thank you. All right, do you need to close your meeting? Vote to close your meeting?
Think emotionally closed. Thank you, Paul, as a favor. Aye.
All right. Thank you for coming and enjoy the rest of your night, Bill.
Thank you.
Big party, Ken.
Yeah, what else you got planned for him, Jeff?
Okay, so uh rolling onto our regular agenda, so the consent agenda, we have the minutes from September 4, 18, and 23 of 2024. We have a contract addendum for Michael Mason, the interim town administrator.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We'll go.
Okay, okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then public comment. Do we have anyone here this evening for public comment? No, okay. Um, we'll skip over that. I know we have a couple of people that are here for a couple of very relatively brief items. So I am going to jump down to uh 6.10, uh which is the Young Men's Club Fishing Derby, uh October 6. Um, this was the reason for our agenda being amended within a 48-hour period. So is there someone here from the club?
Yes, me, Sean Gould. How you guys doing tonight?
Good, Sean.
We're looking for approval and permission to have the kids fishing derby at the reservoir Sunday um October 6 from 8:00 AM to 11:00.
Okay, is there anything different about this year's derby than years past?
Uh, it's gonna be an hour shorter and that's about it. We're gonna have a porta potty onsite. Uh, it'll be removed by noon time and as long as we can get a key to open the gate. Yeah, we're gonna cook hot dogs for the kids and have prizes. That's it.
Okay, and Jennifer, you have any concerns about the derby this year?
I I didn't know about the hot dogs and the cooking um down there. I didn't know about that. Is that's, I don't I don't think I've ever been told that that happens down there before this. Um, I would ask that we just check in with the fire chief before we have a fire at the reservoir.
We uh we uh we, yeah, we we bring in just uh one of those little burners there. Uh, we keep it away from the kids and it's uh very contained. Just boil a, we boil it up. We just serve hot dogs, free hot dogs for the kids.
Okay, so Sean, could we just ask um that you touch base with um inspections and and fire?
Absolutely. I'll talk to Chief Spignable.
Okay, that'd be great. So does somebody want to make a motion subject to whatever conditions might be?
So moved.
Imposed.
Second.
Okay, motion made by David, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks for for our attention, Sean. So glad we could get it done for you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You too. Um, okay, and uh if we could, let's see. Uh, can we do the uh town treasurer and building department, old business 5.2?
Tommy, Tommy. I forgot. Dee Dee, you could take this. It's better to have more than one. I'm sorry.
So uh we didn't have, it's uh, I didn't realize, so just a brief overview here. So the treasurer's here and building department's here. Lady in the middle is the one that calls all products. So Dee uh is going to be moving from um Tommy's office to Linda's office. The reason that this caused is just a little bit of a kerfuffle is just because uh the position in both positions are union positions. And so we had to, we are still in negotiations with the municipal union. And um so we had to make sure that the attorneys involved, the town, our town council, as well as the uh union attorney were aware of this switching and the adjustment because originally, um the position in Linda's office is only a part-time position. And uh the position in Tommy's office is full-time. So the original thought uh when Carolyn was the uh town administrator was that they would be moved. Dee Dee would simply move to the treasurer's office and the treasurer position would become full-time while Tommy's uh office position would become part-time. I don't know how much um involvement uh the building department had in that in session, so I I wasn't aware of it. I I do know that I do stand right now. I think a lot of, directly if I'm wrong, I think a lot of the reasoning behind that was because the hope was that we would find another Dee Dee. And she'd be able to handle the job in the building uh office on a part-time capacity. I think as we stand right now, we're fairly confident that we won't be able to find someone like that. And so uh essentially, I think where we're at right now is that both departments are requesting full-time positions. So we'd be adding a half of a part-time position to uh the building permanent coordinator position. Uh, and so in order to post for that whole job, I figured we should come before you, have some discussion. See if you feel that it's necessary, and something that you want to do so that you can again, post properly to the job.
Can I just, just as a little bit of of background? Um, Linda, I think your original and and if I'm not right, tell me, but I think the original request you had was for somebody full-time and it got backed into.
She'd take whatever she could get.
Right, but an act of desperation. Yes, thank you. But it was so it's 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 not like this has always been a part-time position and now we're asking for it to be full-time. It's just we're going back to your original ask. Right. From.
Right, this this does go back a ways and we just haven't been um it started out with Joan and I sharing a position of that, what uh we called that a finance assistant. She did payroll and Jones with Joan and then she'd come over the rest of the time and do data entry with me. That was never anyone, actually, I've never had an assistant treasurer since John, since we did, since we broke up. She went to HR and I know uh others have assisted both of us, but I'm um there is a leap from being an assistant and a data entry person to being an assistant treasurer. And that is someone who can talk to the banks, move some money, be authorized to move the money, have the authority over the banks, deal with people on the phone. Um, I basically never had anyone either even handle the phone. It's been straight data entry. So it is. Um, I basically never had anyone either even handle the phone, it's been straight data entry, so it is a com- is an additional um. Skill set to uh, to, to bring what DeeDee provides to it. And um, I knew right off the bat when she was interested in it that it was going to work, because I've seen her in operations, she's been, I, we, I basically started about the same time nine years ago. And she's always been very good from the, from the uh, she started as halftime between uh building inspector when it was Tim. Uh, Nyheart and then uh her other halftime was with Gail Weiss as assistant accountant. So she's not new to accounting in Hadley, she is one of the very few people in town, I'd say it's Joan, me and DeeDee who have been working with Vedar for ten years. Um, and with Joan leaving. Um, it's, it comes down to if you wanna report, you're gonna have to uh wait for the accountant and contact the accountant. DeeDee's able to get reports, I am, Joan is, and so it's an additional service to the town, these are a lot of skills that she brings. She knows Quicken already, uh, well, she didn't know Quicken, she knew books, which is harder, and, and well before she started with uh in Hadley. Um, so yes, we've needed, uh, we have sort of been inching as um. Michael says is the Hadley way, we have been inching towards trying to fill the need in both of these departments and HR kind of got ahead of. Uh, a bit last year when you, when that position uh went full-time, which left me with half and I'm kind of next and. Unfortunately, last year it went backwards instead of forwards, so um DeeDee's been really uh already in the short time um able to start with the, with the catch-up. I think it's really important this time that we go ahead and make it full-time, she is already authorized with the bank, she appointed her as assistant treasurer, not as an assistant last time and. She's, she's just doing a terrific job and I think it's an asset to Hadley and I think it's really important that we um continue. She, in, in her first month, took um the classes over at the school, we went over to the uh treasurer's school and she's taken year one. Takes three years of courses to even be able to um apply to be certified. So you have to be in the seat and having taken all the courses and she's already a third of the way there in just a couple of months. And, and looking at other programs that she can go to in the meantime, so I think the enthusiasm, the back, the background that she brings. Knowing Hadley for nine years and most of the people that she's dealing with, uh, it's a very smooth transition. Much smoother in my office than it will be in Tommy's unfortunately.
I know the plan has always been to have a full-time assistant treasurer, so I don't have any question with that, the only question I have is bumping the. Part-time building uh. Permitting coordinators, that way, what, what was?
I was full-time, I am full-time, I am full-time, yeah, it's thirty-seven and a half hours.
We were originally planning on finding a part-time replacement for your position and now, right?
Not exactly, um, it was that he was to still have some full, uh, someone full-time. The thing, the thing is, is that um with me being in the building department, thirty-seven and a half hours. Because I've been doing it so long and knowing what I know, I've been able to do things a lot quicker than. The average, that's why I figured, you know, Linda could use the help and then that's when I started saying, well, maybe I could start helping Linda. Um, but unfortunately, in the building department, I'm not moving, even though with the knowledge I have, I'm not moving up. The pay, pay scale, anything like that. Um, and I need to move up in some way and because I've had the background before. With accounting and I had my own businesses and, you know, did all that stuff, so. Uh, for me, it was an easy transition, plus I had worked with Linda before COVID um in the treasurer's department. But unfortunately, Tommy is going to have, um, I'm gonna help train. The person that does get hired, but unfortunately, he might not have the background with building or anything like that. And so it is, you know, something that I'm not sure how many hours, but it would be more of part, I mean, full-time than part-time.
Well, I think one of the confusions was originally she was gonna be half-time in each office.
Okay.
Yes, and that's what Carolyn wanted to start off with, because she wanted to see if I really wanted to transition into.
It was a test.
Okay.
So.
To that.
That, that's what I thought the case was, so you're working half-time in the building department, are you seeing a huge uh. Uh, problem with your, your efficiencies going down and things like that?
A little bit.
Well, you can, you can make her feel good, Tommy, you know?
Yes. But we make it work.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, from a practical standpoint, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, so having the additional. Cause the additional person in the office doesn't do what you do in the, right?
Oh, of the uh, his assistant?
Yeah.
No.
If you find somebody, that'd be great, but I, I think it's gonna be a struggle. You know, I agree that with that, so with, you know. And of course, offering the full-time, I never knew it was gonna be hard, but offering full-time is gonna get somebody with that much more knowledge and.
No, I'm just, the, the reason I'm asking is because someone's gonna say. Well, it used to be two people in the office and now there's three. Why the full-time, like that's, I'm just double advocating.
No, the other person that's in the office is his. Uh, local inspector, part-time local inspector, so, but he does still not do.
He doesn't do the, the front end.
No, he does more inspections and helping Tommy out with that and the annual inspections and things like that.
Okay.
That's what he's more uh doing.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, from a, from a practical standpoint, I don't. Think we wanna be paying Tommy and Vern to do.
Reception work.
Yeah, paperwork and permitting and things like that, so I mean, it certainly makes sense, you know, that we bring somebody in, but I also think as part of the. Budget process, we wanna look at all of the um support positions. But you know, we've done this multiple times in the past to see. Um, you know, how many hours are in different.
Yeah.
Different departments, um, we'll be able to take a new look uh based on the conversation with the assessors tonight. Um, you know, with Janice leaving as well, retiring as well.
I just know finance is gonna definitely wanna.
Yeah, that's the thing, I want the babies watching, they're gonna wanna talk about it, yeah.
So. What we're hearing, what I'm hearing. Is that DeeDee's going full-time, not half in heads.
That's the goal.
That is.
That's the goal.
Or that's what's actually happened, that's what's happening.
Well, you're, you're gonna stay doing.
I'm staying, I'm doing, I'm playing both.
Okay.
I, I, I'm not funded for full-time, this is, the, the plan was that if the change would be uh special, if we get the funding for the additional amount, that DeeDee would then fill that, fill that job.
Okay.
So uh.
So really, all we're talking about is the extra half-time in your office, because.
For funding.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
And finding somebody to replace DeeDee, I know that's an impossibility, but to take her place in the chair she occupies there.
Right, and I, I think that given the funding that I had for assistants, um, I don't even think it's a. I think I might have been funded for twenty-two or twenty-three hours, so it's not even a double, it's, it's maybe three quarters of a half-time position, if that makes a difference.
Well, it's just easy to get caught up in, oh no, we're looking at two positions here, but we're really not. Looking, to me, we're looking at one half, more, more time for her in the, in your office and. Whoever we get to replace her, that's already a job that's in existence.
And um, and then. We've been very uh, very cooperative about. The, the back and forth, I know a new person, there's a lot to learn and DeeDee would be there for, you know, for, for backup and for going down and assisting. She's, you know, working in my office and someone comes up and needs a permit, she goes, takes care of that, so we, we have a very cooperative arrangement between the offices, so we wanna make sure. That's good, and I, I think this, this helps, I think we've, we've had an issue uh generally with. Uh, bench shift in town hall, um, there's, there's one fix right there, that someone moving around, moving from one department to another is really kind of, is, is helpful in that way, as opposed to getting someone. Brand-new from the outside.
So the goal, goal tonight then would be to. At, what, what we're looking to do is adjust the warrant to make sure that the funding is in there. To cover the, the, the half a person, right?
He's all set, in fact, you might be a little over budgeted.
Whatever, right, so, and you, so you're, this is a benefit position, so at least that part's taken care of, you are over the twenties, right? What you have now.
Yeah, so, well, we'll, we'll look at it, we'll, we'll talk to whoever needs the budget.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're best looking, and we also wanna make sure finance committee's aware of it.
Just for everybody that's watching, just wanna be clear, we're trying to come up with the money to basically fund. A half a position.
Right.
And not two new positions.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so a half a position, which is already benefits, I think that's very much.
That's right.
Right.
Just the hours.
Okay.
So.
Uh, and I think with Linda, uh, Linda's connection with. Uh, the finance committee, in fact, that she's been working directly on warrant. Uh, and the fact that she's working with the accounts to figure out the three cap situation, she can assert, assert what's left of that, less than half of the position. Discuss it with the finance committee, I'm sure she can get it in. I, so.
So I make a motion, we do that.
Okay, motion made by Jane, seconded by David, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And the union's all good with this.
That's coming up later in the faculty session.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
DeeDee, go work on the clone.
I'm sorry, I'm trying. And while you're still here, um, I thought we could do six point four. And then we'll go to six point two in the hallway there. Um, but uh Mike, I believe you wanted to talk to us about a new human resource director and Lauren is here.
Dee. Thank you, yes.
Okay, so seated before you is Lauren Wilcox, uh. She was part of a very large applicant pool that we had for human resource director, we had a. A four-person panel, everyone was on it before she left, uh, the chair, myself and Joe. We uh went through all of the applications, we really spent a lot of time looking through uh. Making sure that the qualifications that we were looking for were there, we narrowed it down to three or four interviews. Um, and Lauren. I don't wanna speak for you, but Lauren, not only did her, was her resume. Kind of glossed away with the things that she has accomplished and things that she's doing right now, but her interviews, um. Uh, I have spoken to her references and uh done a background check and she is. Seems to whistle and uh her references. I've done, I've done several reference calls in my time over at the, the police department, I'm not sure that I have heard references in the praises of someone. As uh, you know, to the rooftops, as I, as I heard. When I was speaking with her. So uh, I don't know if the board wants to ask a question before I make a recommendation to you or not, but. All that really left is, is uh my, my recommendation would be that the board appoint uh Lauren. As the human resources director, depending on just working out uh some minor benefits in salary. I don't think we are very far apart at all based on how we're posting this.
And, and maybe before the board asks any questions, um, just give Lauren, if you wanna take an opportunity to introduce yourself and thumbnail sketch your background for everybody, I mean, they have the resume, but.
I'm Lauren Wilcox, um, I have primarily done human resources in school district, so I've worked closely with towns, although I'm sure it will be a learning curve. Um, coming to the town, my family is from like the Chesapeake Ocean area. Um, and I'm planning on moving closer to the area, probably after winter time. Um, kind of bachelor degree in business administration with a concentration in human resources. I am a known rep, and I'm a show CP. Um, a lot of what I've done in human resources is really rebuilding departments, uh, especially with technology implementations. Um. Making things more efficient, um, that kind of thing, and kind of making it a nice environment, so um it sounds like a perfect fit.
No questions?
No questions.
What the shrimp CP?
If the society, a human resource management certified professional.
Thank you.
Was actually one of the. One of the main considerations that was suggested for a position like this.
Motion to approve the hiring.
Second. Okay, motion made by David, seconded by Amy, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Congrats.
Well.
Congratulations.
When can you start?
Um, October twenty-first, I hope you start, that's about it.
So uh, what my plan was is I'll reach out to you, at some point, just to, just to maybe make the call, so that would be, um, some details and you can lock that in. Show you around town hall and introduce you to everybody.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Hey, uh, six point two. Over fifty-five housing, I believe we have a couple of people and then we will do um, and then the paint after that.
Hello.
Hello again.
Good evening, Mr. Reed and Mr. Roberts.
Do you have another microphone, please?
Then two of them should be okay, it's really when you throw in that third party. Hmm, but if y'all feel like, do they need to? Okay.
Thanks. Uh, go to tires.
Well, yours.
Okay. Uh, for the record, Tom Reed, in the attorney with Baker Olson over in Amherst, second, um, with me, certainly need an introduction of Barry Roberts. Uh, we are here to talk to you this evening about a zoning amendment uh for the fall town meeting to extend the over fifty-five, the senior of the overly district. Uh, to. Be bordered by one sixteen and I've got a plan and I'll, I'll pass out, we border by one sixteen on east, uh, Rocky Hill in the north. North Maple Street on the left and Woson Street on the south. We'll do this to you, it's just the origin, they already know. But anyway, if they're looking to do a map, it'd be this senior housing. Thank you.
Just a little bit of background on senior housing over the district. I know Mr. Guaya, so you can correct any inaccuracies, uh, but I believe that it was first enacted in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, and really what it does, it's in the overly district, which allows the development of housing, which is restricted. For those folks who, if one member of the household is only made fifty-five, protected class and. Um, restricted to, to make sure at least one person is over the age of fifty-five. And so city two thousand and eight, the zoning by that to have is only to utilize mineouts once and it's for East Street town. Which is development over East Street, there's thirty-five units, I believe that there are two units left. Um, that's been, uh, I'll save your president. Or it's not, correct, or have you all spoken? And so there's, there's a demand in town for um housing generally, I think as you know, and certainly senior housing. And uh we think this is a very good opportunity to expand that housing base, to expand the, the ability to have senior housing. Um, in town. And so there's gonna be a warrant article, like we were in front of the planning board last evening, they voted to, to take no position on it, um. Which I think we, we heard that at least one of the members, not a few of them are going to speak in town meeting in favor of it, but they did not want to. They're not proposing it, uh, so I don't think they want to, correctly, but I don't know if they want to take a position on it. And so, um, if we are successful at town meeting, what would happen is we would still. Have to go through a special permits process. And so what you see in front of you is the uh, the aerial map is the expanded senior housing overlay district, so that's where the, the colorized ones, so that's where you've got. Rocky Hill, Ruffel, North Maple, and uh one sixteen. Particularly what, what we're interested in is the so-called bad property on the northerly end, it's about a thirty-acre. Parcel, uh, there's been talk of developments of it for quite some time, I think they're just TPW, we've had some interest at the Trinidad, it's a. Well, the housing developer, one with two hundred and some on units on it. Um, neither, which have gone anywhere, it's not under any chapter classification, so it's not chapter sixty-one, sixty-one B, sixty-one A. There's no APR, so it is developable and somewhat apparently the landowners aren't looking to develop. Uh, that site and there likely to both through. Uh, that site and there likely to function through building lots. Um, single family homes, uh, based upon a subdivision of the property and that subdivision is something that is essentially allowed by rights, we can go through the process with the planning board. And likely, or anyone would go through that process with the planning board. And there would be, and I'm going to just distinguish this from the over fifty five in a moment. Um, there's probably, there probably would be a request in that subdivision to have the town accept the infrastructure. So to accept the roadways, to accept stormwater, uh, systems and the other utilities that are on the site. Why I contrast that with the over fifty five is, um, what I think Barry would be looking to do with successful at town meeting and ultimately successful with the planning board is to, uh, build up to fifty, so the senior housing overlay allows no more than fifty five zero units in a senior housing development. They, they have to be either single family, two family, three or four units per um, in a building, I think what Barry would be looking to do is only single family, so you've got fifty single family units, they can have no more than two bedrooms each, we have a maximum of a hundred bedrooms there. Uh, in the infrastructure, so the roadways, the stormwater, it would need to be a sewer pumping station, very, very another conversation with TPW, they do have the capacity at North Maple Street to have the sewer tie into it for these many units. Um, but it would require a sewer pump up part of the site to get it up and then gravity feed it into the North Maple Street, um, sewer. That would all remain private, as would the water lines, et cetera, that are within that development. So it's, um, you know, we'll be running numbers based upon, without thinking of building purpose, without thinking about sewer connections, water connections, et cetera. Just for taxes, if you assess these at four hundred thousand, which when you look at East Street Commons, their amount, assess that that amount, they're looking at about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year in new taxes to the town. In addition, as part of this, you would get fifteen percent, uh, affordable, so they could qualify in the subsidized housing inventory account. And they would be provided on the site, so where East Street Commons, we did a payment in lieu. Here, if you're successful, they would be fifteen percent would be provided on the site. Uh, as you likely know, there is an ability to have up to seventy percent local preference, so you can get, um, having residents ideally downsizing and whether they go the affordable route or just market rate route. I mean, that's kind of the point, I think Barry can talk a little bit earlier in a minute, but he can talk about the demand that he's experienced with East Street Commons. Um, and how he is envisioning this project. I'll pause there, I don't know if you have any, that's a lot of information, and I just sort of, you were ultimately looking for, you know, a, a recommendation. Um, hopefully those, so you can take a position on this and be able to recommend it at town meeting, uh, but we're happy to answer.
Before we hit that.
Yep.
I just need to make everybody aware, Mr. Roberts is a client of mine, so I will not be participating in this conversation.
Fair enough.
Uh, so the infrastructure, the grounds, I'm assuming is going to be association maintained of some sort?
Yeah, it would be a condo association, so then the condo association would bear that, making this obligation responsibility.
Okay.
And the town would take on the roads?
Nope. That would also, yes, all of it is private, so it's, it's like East Street Commons, the stormwater system, the roads, the sidewalks, if they're there. Sprinkler system, you name it, that's all.
Yeah. Now, that, that was my question, and I think it's a good way to have new growth in town with limited impact on our infrastructure, schools, et cetera.
And just to, um, one other point, I don't remember if you said it or not, so I apologize, when you were talking, um, you know, again, uh, questions come up about, you know, but wouldn't we rather? Um, and just making clear, this is not in APR.
Correct.
At the, and the owner has no intention of going that route.
Correct, it's fully developable and that's why, by contrast, we identify twenty two building lots, which, I mean, you could have four bedrooms, five bedrooms per, and then, you know, here where you're limited to no more than a hundred bedrooms, there you could have a hundred then, and then who, you know, we have McMansions, because I think you're at, it's two hundred feet of frontage and forty thousand square foot lots, so you can fit a decent sized house on there compared to, I think what Barry would be looking for.
So, my only question, um, is it no longer under N H E S P?
There is, from, excellent question, so there's some priority habitat, I think in the southwest corner, and so that'd be something we have to do, we have to cut into all of the diligence because it's, you know, if, if it does pass at town meeting, then the real work starts to get, do all the diligence, the customizing, and over division of pictures and wildlife, et cetera, but we're.
Okay, yeah, because I was going to say, because my first question was, is there, was it wetlands down, because I know it kind of goes down in and it's not, but I, I was just like, I need to look up maps really quick, because I was like, oh no.
Yeah, in terms of, if you're thinking about it, you know, on the, uh, easterly side of the site, there is, it's all wooded, and I think one of the things that Barry would like to do is not go into any of those woods, including the woods that are shut out, and then behind is the Hawkins Meadow Road, Hawkins Road. Um, there's a, like a farm field back there, he wouldn't be going back there, so I think he's, he's trying to find that balance of respecting the natural environment with development where it's appropriate, and so those wetlands are more toward, I'll say one sixteen is the general direction.
Yeah, because I was going to say, I know across the street, there's like a, what do they call it, like bernal pools?
Yeah.
Vernal pools?
Yes.
But that's on the other side of the road.
Yeah, and we've had, uh, City River, um, it's a lot of consulting, uh, uh, does a lot of Barry's work, and so we'll have him out there a little bit, he's a, he's a wildlife biologist himself. You know, there's obviously many rules that come with it, there is a bernal pool or some endangered or protected species. They can consider it a take, they can apply an offset of three to one or two to one, depending upon what the actual is out there, so yes, that's.
So one of the questions I know that's going to come up is, do you plan to have the entrance of the neighborhood on Rocky Hill Road, or where, where, where is the road going to be?
Yeah, great question, so I think at this point, it's, it's probably, uh, a loop road, um, with one entrance across was at Plainville Road, and then the other one looping around, uh, and probably coming out not a little further south than the existing bad driveway on North Maple, so we would see it as a loop road, uh, from one to the other there.
Barry, sorry, anything, oh, sorry.
Um, so one of the things I hear from seniors here in this building is they like the idea of East Street Common, but there's no way they can afford, have you considered building something that's more affordable? But still not in the subsidized category.
Yeah, I think, and I'll, I'll answer to you, you can, I mean, always consider it, right, this is a conversation that comes up very often, the, the problem, frankly, is construction. Right, you just, you'd love to be able to sell something for three hundred thousand, but when you're at three hundred dollars a square foot, or, or just a four hundred dollars a square foot, or I'll say one of them though, but that's really what you're looking at. It just, it makes it difficult, right, so it's, it's not like he's, Barry's, oh, I'm going to make a ten percent margin on these things, right?
Even at, at two families as opposed to single families, where you have the similar shell, if you will.
Yeah, and I think it's worth exploring, I don't know if, I mean, we have a couple of those at East Street Common.
Mm-hmm.
Um, not, they're together.
Right.
Yeah, two blocks, yeah, yeah, that's, yeah. Uh, we have a couple of those at East Street Common, uh, they're a little smaller, uh, but still very expensive to build, you know?
Yeah, I was going to say, it was just in Home Depot and a three quarter, three quarter inch, four by eight piece of plywood, pressure treated, is fifty three bucks. So.
We feel whatever we got.
Is the, uh, affordable housing set aside, is that permanent on our roster, or are they sunset?
Okay.
Now, are any of the, um, existing structures in this um, outlined area, are any of those being demolished, or are you just building around it?
We're still looking at a possible layout, we've talked some about the existing farmhouse, the old staff farmhouse.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's a two family, uh, maybe maintaining that. Uh, and it's, I've been through it once, there's, it's quite a bit of work, uh, uh, we might talk about keeping that, the dads want to keep the two small houses that are closer to one sixteen.
Okay.
They're stressed with interest, they want to keep those, and I can see that they would be far enough away from the loop road and whatever was built off the loop road. Maybe just one, I mean, I answered one point for clarity, so we're talking a lot about the bad property, but, you know, with the map you have in front of you identifies that whole area, and so it would be an overlay district, we're doing this for a couple of reasons. One primarily is to avoid spot zone, so spot zoning is one of the, choose one property and say, we're going to change this zoning to benefit just this property, so you know, the overlay district that's coming before town meeting is going to be this entire area from, you know, as we've outlined it here, for Barry's interest, he's looking at that thirty acres of that property.
So, because it is an overlay, obviously Venture Way is industrial, I believe, zone, so would it still remain dual zone?
Correct, yeah, they could still avail themselves of the existing zoning district.
Okay, so it's not going to eliminate any of the limited industrial areas we have in town by changing this so, this district, okay?
Yeah, I think that actually, and Mr. Dwyer brought the point up in a couple, many more meetings ago, but the, your bylaw allows existing structures, in any building district, I believe, to be converted to senior housing. The, I'll say problem, but I'll say loosely, is that your senior, senior housing overlay district bylaw restricts the maximum number of units in a building to four. And so when you look at some of these existing structures, and you say, oh, this would be great, you just, they're not going to change everything just to put four units in that structure.
That's a bylaw change, is a constitution. Zone change.
Yeah, and so what we're looking to do here is just use the existing, uh, bylaw provisions and just put it in a new area.
So my understanding, um, from both of you is that you wanted to come in front of us tonight mainly for educational purposes, you're not looking for any vote or anything, but just.
Take a vote, but.
Yeah.
You know, what it is more, it is to take, it worked out a lot of the time ago, but if you're on my, if you're on my, since we can come back with something else, or the way we should be thinking about this, maybe want to be sensitive to concerns of open stage, we want to be, you know, we want to hear the issues so that we're best prepared in town meeting, uh, come in a month now.
And just saying, so they've obviously been in front of the, um, planning board, as stated, and they also came in front of the, um, Housing Economic Development Committee. And, uh, same presentation as well.
So, I, I know they're not looking for a vote, but if the board is willing, I'd be happy to make a motion, but otherwise.
Sit on it for a week and do our two, two meeting thing.
Right, well then, I'll just speak for myself, I think it's a, uh, a better option than two hundred houses being jammed into an area that we had pitched to us in the past, and I think it's the lowest impact on the feel of Hadley and supports the seniors, what we've been looking to do, so that's just my opinion, not the board's.
And I agree with your opinion.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
I agree with that, and the question that keeps being asked is, if it knew housing, how are we going to keep students out? And over fifty five takes care, well, there are students over fifty five, but it's not what we speak of as the student population.
And I think it's, it checks off a lot of the boxes in the, uh, uh, plans, the housing production plan that you have, and I think the uh, age and dementia friendly plan, and downsides, and it provides the support of the minimum condo association, where we can downsize and just pay a condo fee to have somebody else sweep and clean and land state, et cetera, so it seems to check a lot of boxes.
So my, I'm a hundred percent in this. My only thought was if we change such a large area that is open space, like if we're talking about fifty years down the road, do you, is, is there any currently unforeseen consequences that could arise from us having such a large area dedicated?
To over fifty five?
Yeah. Like if something wants to come in in the future?
Well, they could still come in in the industrial park, right?
Hey, I want to ask Mr. Dwyer a question around, Bill, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Um, Venture Way is zoned industrial, is that correct?
That is correct.
And in the industrial zone, residential use is not allowed, is that correct?
Uh, it is not allowed under current zoning, but it would be allowed in the overlay district.
Okay, thank you, just wanted that to be clear to everybody.
So if, I know that Venture Way is having some occupancy issues at the moment, you know, it might open that up to more housing. Just like we've heard from the malls, if the malls
Yeah.
need to do something else with their space.
Space on Route nine, right, isn't it?
And I think, but a finer point on that. So, if there's maybe a need for a zoning amendment to those bylaw provisions to allow it to, but yes, so.
Okay, I appreciate your time and, um, good luck.
Appreciate your time.
All right, and we'll, we'll see you at town meetings.
Good seeing you.
Uh, November fourteenth, date changed, right, I believe?
You've got that.
All right, thank you, um, and we have another guest this evening, we have Mr. Irwin, is that right?
He gave us all his stuff last night.
So, uh, Tom, you're here to talk to us about paint stewardship.
Yeah. I, uh, prepared a handout that I referenced this week.
Just different than the one you gave us a month and a half ago?
Um, I can't be positive, if, if there's going to be some information that will overlap, but I just give you surety that when I say handout, I want to
And it is some of this, some of the stuff that we have in, in our.
We have, we have board docs on the bill.
Yes.
And I will be able to click right and see the long media. Good evening and thanks for this opportunity to speak about paint stewardship. Uh, my name is Tom Irwin, as you know, and I'm from Dalton, in New Orleans, ours. And, uh, I was fortunate in my retirement to want to participate in projects that had the potential to help future generations. So as a member of Dalton Police Management Committee, when it became clear that paint stewardship would begin improving the waste problem that most Massachusetts towns face, save towns money, and possibly impact a climate change ball, I became an advocate for this law. Paint stewardship, as you may know, is a program where unwanted paint can be returned to any of its paying tanks, these sales store, any day they're open, without the stalls are lost, and without regard where it came first. This program is voluntary, so retailers can transfer stations, as you can see on your first handout for retailers in Vermont, clearly come to open a program that suits their business. The cost to consumers is a seventy five cent dollar eco fee for gallon paint and paid at times for instance. This stage for transportation of the materials include a, um, reprocessing plant where the latex is reblended like new condition, and then sold for fifty percent of the original cost, entities such as the oil these states are most often used as coal fuels and cement plants. As a result, we prefer we do not induct and land. Even the pails are most often recycled. This program has been working well in ten states, including our neighboring states of Connecticut, Rhode Island, Maine, Vermont, and New York. And the first four of those are, have been operating for over a decade. The key benefits that Hattie will experience are first, it's going to be a service to the resident without notably roughly seventy, forty percent of the paint that's returned to retailers who are just over the border with Man, of Massachusetts and the adjoining states with laws that they're being compromised to shut, forty percent of the paint in no sort of return is from Massachusetts revenue. Also, of nine hundred and thirty two residents dropping off items that also have to the sway state against law and state. Ninety one percent find petitions asking for their legislative to be postponed or suspended. This suggests that ninety one percent of county residents who unwound his name or business and likely their name would deeply appreciate that. Third, paint stewardship will be a great model for future paint steward, first, future stewardship legislation to address larger items such as mattresses for curving, fur, solar panels, packaging, and the upcoming problem of recharter of lifting bags and products. The resolution you can consider tonight, which is your second handout, your second page of your handout, is consistent with state plans. There's no harm in this. The MMA of this bill, right, dealing with the environment and natural resources committee, which is your, the third page of your hand. The mass CT in the twenty third of following plastic. Called out deep beyond general and deeply beyond state law, as key tools to achieve their goal of zero waste. In fact, this math, the claim falls for thirty percent reduction in waste by twenty thirty. In fact, this math plane falls for thirty percent reduction in waste by twenty-third and a ninety percent reduction by twenty-fifth. And without stewardship programs, I find it's harder than that. How would we possibly achieve these goals? Support for this legislation is fortunately very raw. The paint manufacturers, paint retailers who work together with consumers, which is a five-year process of arguing and hassling who comes to some confusion where everybody shrugs at the end of it and says, I can notice this. Those folks aren't supporting. Also, the war comes from ninety-one percent of the many people with unwanted pain in their basement. The twenty-eightth, the fall centers from both parties who sponsor or postponed weekly. Then through your fifth handout, the ninety-four Minnesota counties today that have passed similar resolutions to endorsement. So what's next? Legislators have made clear that in order for paint stewardship to receive serious consideration, the support of leadership of the legislature in order to make it work, municipal towns must demonstrate that addressing the solid waste issue, beginning with transport is a municipal priority. That's what this resolution will do. In July, seventy minutes ago, which represents twenty-seven percent of the state's population, that needs statements of support. This call bill be considered, but did not compel uh sufficient leadership support to send the bill to the board for vote. More support was clearly needed. Therefore, with this in mind, and since Hattie residents will appreciate the block, since this law will save Hattie money, and since reducing waste is critical to our future, our respectfully request that Hattie select will add their value enhancement to this project by passing a supportive resolution. Thank you for your attention and your consideration for that.
No questions?
Sure.
Uh Jane, um so in your chart, the first piece paid, uh paint retailers involved in the thing. Um what percentage of that is, how, what percentage of paint retailers are involved?
I don't know that.
I mean, more than half, less than half?
We honestly don't know the number.
So do you know how the process would work? Let's say I go buy a gallon of paint and I have to pay a surcharge or whatever the name you echo fee of whatever it is. Now, is that can of paint, does it have a sticker on it or something that says I can bring back my leftover paint? Or do I just bring the paint back? No matter what, I don't have to have a receipt is basically what I'm asking.
You do not have that.
So pre-purchase.
Pardon me, but this, if you take that same can of things to Vermont and put it on the common share of things up there, they're going to take it back at that clock.
Okay.
So paint purchase previous to this passing would still be accepted.
They don't care where you got it, they don't care when you got it, they don't care what state it is.
Okay.
So this echo fee, where, does it mention anything about what this fee is or what?
Less than a dollar a gallon, it says.
Seventy-five cents for dollars for the gallons.
Per gallon, per gallon or per?
Well, it's, if you've got a lot of gallon paint, it'd be seventy-five cents. If you buy five days, it's not three seventy-five, it's one sixty. They're not trying to make money, they're just, they're trying to break even.
Or should buy a quart?
Buy a quart, uh thirty-five, and then buy a little some quarter.
Okay. I just, people will want to know.
Right. And uh there's a piece that we've got to say now, I just sell too much information.
Sure. I, I hear you. My seller is begging for this.
I think if we cycle and we stay committed, um the fee over the last twelve years of this thing has been in place does not change by one penny. So through all the inflation, through all of this, that, and the next, it's not changed at all.
So just playing doubles advocate here on this, but uh you know, we talk about affordable housing, we talk about construction costs, we talk about things like that. We were just talking about it last week or, you know, seventy-five cents added onto every gallon of paint, you know, construction costs are already through the roof and yeah, there's what thirty percent of the municipalities in the state have already signed on to this, but what about the other seventy percent and the costs associated with that? Uh although it's great that we recycle and we have the household hazardous waste program, which I think is great and it works. Do we really want to add mandatory fees and costs at the same time? We're trying to have affordable housing and programs like that. The two are not really compatible. So I think there has to be a balance here.
Yeah, but then I also think about, I mean, how, how are people disposing of it today? There's a cost associated with that, right? So I mean, if they aren't burying it in concrete in the Connecticut River, you know, so.
The preferred way.
Hopefully they're, they're bringing it.
If you take the paint to household hazardous waste day, you have to pay for it.
Yeah, right.
Well, the town, yeah, the town pays for the, what, the one or two collections a year that we have.
The individuals also pay. The town pays and.
There's a, there's some kind of a fee to get rid of paint.
Yeah, yeah. No, I hear what you're saying. I mean, that's a good point. It's just, I don't know what the calculus is.
Well, I also think um he answered part of it by saying the five gallon buckets are not per gallon, it's, it's a much less rate and most, most developers do use the larger quantities since they are developers.
I have.
If a developer has a hundred gallons left over, they don't have to wait for it to sort of involve a paint car. If he got a hundred, he got a hundred gallons, and they send a truck over at no cost. They put it in the truck, away it goes.
It saves your contractor.
Yeah. Um typically what we would do is something like this is, is this would be a had initial conversation, we take it under advisement. Uh we'd probably want to, uh I'd be interested in getting some feedback from our legislative offices too, you know, because they're, they must be familiar with these, these bills going through. Get some additional feedback.
Is Lindsay Sadino your representative?
No, we have um Joe Commerford is our uh.
She's a, she is a co-soc with Bill.
Yep. And then um we, we had Dan Carey.
We still do.
We, well, I don't know, he's been around the courthouse, I guess. He's already getting ready for his next job.
I had Joe Saitkowski the other day. So he's still, he's still hanging around.
Yeah.
But that, that's a good idea, Molly.
And then I'm assuming you're available if um we have additional questions before either tabling it or making a decision.
For each one, all welcome to getting us off, you know, we work out. You know, we have to return you all up.
Okay. And I, I think, you know, comfortably, we can plan on putting this season on our, our next, within the next one or two meetings. So we weren't going to, you know, delay indefinitely.
Okay, excellent.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
For all the information, it was a good education. Thank you. And a good project, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the reason the other seventy percent are, so I had to visit them.
I was waiting for you to say that, yeah. Okay, great. So uh now going back and we'll just take things in order and knock them off. Um so I believe we are going back to special town meeting review. Uh Mike, is there anything we need to look at tonight on the warrant or?
So uh we're in the same place that we were uh the last meeting and you opted to skip it until we had more numbers, but the only thing I would like you to discuss just really briefly is whether or not we'd like to say public forum date officially so that we can get posted and get on some calendar and all that.
Mm-hmm. It's usually the week before. Yep. So the week before. So we've got the election on Tuesday, right? So typically we would do the Wednesday or Thursday before, I think.
Yes.
We already have a meeting scheduled on the sixth. In the past, I've done it where you started an hour earlier or staggered it so you could do the first half of the hour as the public forum and then go into your regularly scheduled meeting. And you've also done it where you've met on this night and then met again immediately on Thursday night for the public forum.
I'm trying either way. What's the pleasure of the, the board?
As long as it's like a shorter meeting.
Yeah, can we stack them? If it's a shorter meeting, probably regular board meeting.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah. So stack them. So we would do it on the sixth. It's the same night as our. So we would start at six for the forum and then just have a shorter agenda. Is that what you're saying?
That we were not trying to. Than the seventh person, can you put your liquidity committee to anyone you said?
Forum typically doesn't take that long.
No, it's not. I moved all of their stuff out of just like board's way. I pushed that committee to move stuff around. Just, just to be safe.
Okay, so that ones now.
Mm-hmm. Okay, but are we starting at six? Because Amy, I don't think you can start at five, right?
I can start at five fifteen.
Want to compromise in five thirty?
Five thirty. Yeah, and even if we start, I mean, the whole point of the forum is so that people can attend if they want to. So maybe we start our meeting.
Start at five and Amy comes in.
Yeah, I, I, I can get out a few minutes early and get here for five.
What if you, what if you did your meeting before and then started the forum at seven?
That's what I mean. Yeah, sorry. Yeah. No, it's okay. Yeah, I can do five, five thirty, whatever you guys need.
And if we're not done with the business, then we'll put our meeting on hold.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so five o'clock then on November sixth.
And the forum starts at, you want to start it at seven?
We're going to start it at six thirty.
Six thirty, perfect. Starts at six thirty. Thank you.
We're not hanging out because we're so efficient.
Is that okay with you, Mike? Two? Okay, perfect. Okay, so nothing else? Does anybody want to discuss any items on the warrant right now? Okay, um then we have the boards and committee appointments, item six point one. Jennifer?
Um, yeah, okay. Linda Zieggenfing um has applied to serve on the cultural council. I've put her in contact with the council. There are openings on the committees and she has attached her application. I've attached her application here for you. Um so I think she would be a good fit based off of what she submitted to you all.
And she's a Hadley resident.
Yes.
She's already on another committee. So. Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Linda, for your interest. Uh it's, I'm ready for that. Okay, uh item six point five. Um so the Board of Assessors submitted letters of retirement from Dan Zadonic and Janice Kengas. We heard that earlier. Um and then chief, the police department?
Oh, yes, all right. Uh I think we had both of these individuals here on Zoom earlier, but they may have, may have dropped out sometimes. Uh so I have three requests and changes for the Communications Department. We have one, um one resignation. Uh Ethan Nesbit, who's been a dispatcher to us for about a year now, he did get another job somewhere, uh doing dispatch and uh has submitted this resignation. We had one vacancy that we have been trying to fill for a while. It's already in a good position. Uh and luckily enough, during our interview process with that position, we were able to sign two uh qualified applicants. So we can fill the vacancy that we already had and we can fill Ethan's vacancy at the same time. So our two, uh my two uh recommendations are Shawna Clark. Shawna has extensively administrative and customer service skills, gained from working in a variety of front desk and office manager positions over the years. And as you know, uh we always try to look for folks uh with jobs just like that and uh customer service and sales positions for, for dispatch. She got her interest in joining a public safety team while working the admissions desk at the emergency department at Cooley Difidence Hospital during the fight with COVID. Uh Amanda LeBlanc, Amanda started her career in customer service and sales, working in fast-paced environments, honing her problem-solving and multitasking, multitasking skills. More recently, she has worked as a paint manager at Substance Abuse Recovery Program, aiding people uh without judgment during a difficult time and handling confidential information. I would like to recommend that the board accept Ethan Nesbit's resignation and that they appoint Shawna Clark and Amanda LeBlanc to full-time dispatch.
So moved. Second. Motion made by Amy, seconded by Jean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And apologies to uh the two of them if they were on earlier.
I know, I saw at least one of them.
Sorry about that.
Do you want another motion to accept Dan and Janice's re- their retirement as well?
That's right, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept those retirements as well.
Yep, good guess. Uh motion made by David, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that. Okay, item six point six, the um November fifth presidential election warrant. Um I believe we're being asked to approve this by our Tim clerk.
Second.
Motion made by Amy, seconded by David. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have uh three, yeah, three APR articles. Um Jennifer, you want to run through these or?
Absolutely. So this is just the first step of uh potential APR projects. So the MD, MDR is asking for you all to read the notice of the proposed acquisition here at your meeting. There is an attached statement for a member to read. And then they're also asking for a motion to waive the hundred and twenty day uh notification period, period for each of these projects. So uh we would need to read the acquisition notice for each one and then we would need to waive the motion or do the motion to waive the hundred and twenty day period.
Okay, so the first one then is for the Tolper?
Correct.
Family nominee trust. And.
This is where you have to like read the in compliance with general law, chapter seven C, section thirty-seven, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts acting by and through its Department of Agricultural Resources, MDR, the department, uh hereby gives notice that it proposes to acquire an agricultural preservation restriction, APR, on the real property identified herein for the purposes of protecting in perpetuity its superior and productive agricultural resources by preventing their conversion to other uses. The application received by MDR indicates that the property is owned by Peter T. Panish, uh trustee of the Toppler Family Nominee Trust and consists of parcel located at uh Middle Street in Hadley as appropriately represented on the attached maps. The APR may encompass all or parts of the area shown. The current use of the proper, property is primarily for corn and potatoes. Uh following the recording of the APR, the use of the subject property is limited to agricultural use as more uh particularly set forth in the APR document, the general laws, chapter uh one eighty-four, section thirty-one, and the regulations of the department, three thirty, CMR twenty-two, um at sec. Et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
A motion to waive the hundred and twenty days.
So we would need a motion to um waive the hundred and twenty day notification period.
Motion to waive a hundred and twenty days.
Um.
Do we need to make a motion to what Amy just read or is that just for informational purposes? Okay, so I'll second Jane's motion.
Okay, uh motion made by Jane, seconded by Randy. Again, this is relative to the Tolper estate.
I just wanted to amend it, right? Because the motion to waive the one, uh should, should we read it all the way?
The motion?
Yeah, so the motion would be, I would like to make a motion to waive the one twenty day notification period for APR project name, the Toppler Family Nominee Trust, project ID twenty-four C zero eight.
Okay, motion made by Amy and Sarah, second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is the Margaret Riley, yeah, Riley.
Yeah.
Uh Amy, you want to do this one or swap off or?
I got you. I got you.
This is on Bay Road.
Right across from Moody Bridge Road.
Thank you.
All right. So in compliance with general law, chapter seven C, section thirty-seven, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts acting by and through its Department of Agricultural Resources, the department, hereby gives notice that it proposes to acquire an agricultural preservation restriction, APR, on the real property identified herein for the purpose of protecting in perpetuity its superior and productive agricultural resources by preventing their conversion to other uses. The application received by MDR indicates that the property is owned by Margaret L. Riley and consists of parcels located at uh one six seven Bay Road in Hadley as approximately represented on the attached maps. The APR may encompass all or parts of the area shown. The current use of the property is primarily for corn and hay. Following the, the recording of the APR, the use of the subject property is limited to agricultural use as more um particularly set forth in the APR.
Um, particularly set forth in the APR document. The general laws, chapter one eighty-four, sections thirty-one, and the regulations of the department, Uh, three thirty, CMR twenty-two point zero zero, exec.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table? Well, you have to, have to read it.
Oh.
Uh, again, so I'll make a motion to waive the hundred and twenty-day notification period for the APR project name Margaret L. Riley, project ID number twenty-four C zero seven.
Second.
Motion made by me, seconded by Randy. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, next. You got it rhythm there, Amy.
Alright, um, so Do you wanna say where it is?
Sure, um, so this is, uh, APR project is the heirs of Joseph T. Koski. And this parcel is located.
In David Hill's backyard.
Yeah, the way in one of my backyards, one in David's. This is off of Knightly Road, fifteen and a half acres.
Alright, so in compliance with general law, chapter seven C, section thirty-seven, The Commonwealth of Massachusetts acting by and through its Department of Agricultural Resources, the department, Hereby gives notice that it proposes to acquire an agricultural preservation restriction, APR, On the real property identified herein for the purposes of protecting in perpetuity its superior and productive agricultural resources By preventing their conversion to other uses. The application received by MDR indicates that the property is owned, uh, by the heirs of Joseph T. Koski And consists of parcels located at Knightly Road in Hadley as approximately represented on the attached maps. The APR may encompass all our parts of the area shown. The current use of the proper, of the property is primarily for mixed vegetables. Following the recording of the APR, the use of the subject property is limited to agricultural use as More particularly set forth in the APR document, the general laws, chapter one eighty-four, section thirty-one, and the regulations of the department, Uh, three three zero, CMR twenty-two point zero zero, exec.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion to waive the hundred and twenty-day notification period for APR project name, the heirs of Joseph T. Koski, project ID number twenty-four C zero five. Second. Motion made by me, seconded by Amy. All those in favor?
Alright, I have to abstain, I'm working on this project.
Yeah, okay. Alright, and then, um, before we go into executive session, we have the town administrators' report and town project updates.
Yes, um, uploaded to your board docs is the TA report. I will go quickly. In terms of time, anything in blue, uh, is new from our last meeting. So obviously, the, uh, HR director position, we may have an issue for that tonight, uh. The positions anticipate we're posting, the only changes were what we discussed this evening, the reassessor, assistant assessor, as opposed to the building Part of the property. As we passed town meeting and before we discussed. Um, government restructuring today, Molly and I met with Dell, uh, twenty-fifth. We have a kickoff meeting, uh, I think personally scheduled for October tenth at five PM, our committee set. Uh, we'll be meeting on that eighth, uh, Wednesday morning. Uh, classification, compensation, settlement plan, the last part, there are two parts left to complete this, one of them is Uh, to, uh, go over the draft and field policy, uh, have the board reviewing. But also, I, I have a meeting set for either the end of this week or the start of the next where Um, the HR manager from Commerce Center will be reaching out to me to, uh, discuss the official finalization Uh, of that project and anything else that may be, uh, outstanding with the game. Uh, CDVG projects, I have been in touch with the program managers. And I'm just trying, I'm still trying to wrap my mind around to understand what our responsibilities are, but a couple of are very helpful, uh, in that, essentially. They are handling all of the uploading of data, and we simply just have to approve the documents as they come in. Uh, nothing's changed in procurement for Russell School Reuse Study, that's gonna stay that way, likely being a little there till the end of the year, we're still waiting. To say the board last time, waiting for it to be done by Christmas. Talking of cemetery events, um, this is a slight change since I actually typed this and we uploaded it today, because I was working on it earlier this afternoon. Uh, the building commissioner will be going out to the site, the W director, Um, to view the site, which was part of what was discussed with Lisa Mead. Uh, the part that has changed is that we have heard back from their attorney, who Lisa And the, uh, the company, uh, had this requesting about two weeks to finish up a couple of different jobs that they had going on. We can be able to be back out to the site to get things moving, which is really good news. Uh, see. The levy, uh, situation, uh, I finally heard back from the engineer, this has also changed since I, I get Uh, heard back from the engineer today. He will be sending us their draft final report on this by the end of the month. Uh, we're setting up a meeting, we'll have to go over every change that we need to give the report back to the board with their, with their final recommendations and final reports. Uh, two thirty-four, Middle Street, almost up. We are almost all set with that project, uh, we're gonna Be a little bit full of that. Library roof, the only change in this is that the company hired, um, It was, uh, uh, done, I believe, with their inspection, with the inspection part of it, the way for their final report. And we'll get the report to legal, the parties together and start discussing how we can resolve that issue. I skipped over the fiber project, and then I can count here. Um, the update on this is that, uh, I've been working with all of the department heads who are Uh, gonna be benefiting from the fiber project, and we did everybody together, uh, to have a, uh, Meeting so that everybody is aware of anything that the fire chief needs to this project forward. Or anything that they need from the fire chief as far as, uh, you know, answering any questions like steps and things that are Are still outstanding with that question. But as far as I know, we are very close to being completed and having everybody hope that. So I have free time to get any questions prior to it.
Uh, I would just like to say, and I don't have the specifics, but the electric aggregate programs having a Presentation of the senior center, either this week or next week. I can go look it up, but I'd have to leave the meeting. Alright, it's, call the senior.
It was today.
It was today?
Three o'clock.
It was three o'clock today, sorry about that. Alright, so we're right on it here at the senior center. Thank you, Sue.
Okay, so no questions for Mike? Um, it's not any liaison reports or announcements? Nope. See, I just got a tickle in my throat, um. Yeah, we'll catch up on announcements at the next meeting.
Okay, we're good then?
Yep.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, blah, blah, blah. Um, to Mass General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy With respect to collective bargaining, uh, or litigation, if an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining Or litigating position of the public body for the compensation study. The municipal employee union and firefighter union, um, executive session minutes, and we will not be reconvening an open session this evening.
Second. Sorry, lost my place there. Okay, so motion made and seconded? Um, as Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the board is moved and seconded to enter into executive session. And I state that discussing this matter in open session will have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the town of Hadley. Jennifer, can I have a roll call vote?
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Beiser?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.